Steve, I will call this order at four thirty-six today for our facilities meeting discussing a couple of items on our agenda, starting off with personnel before we get into facilities. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Barry for the personnel discussion. Actually, I just opened up a public comment. Anybody have a public comment in person tonight? Seeing none? Anybody online, Steve?
No, sir.
I will close public comment and now I will.
Whoa, hold on here. I apologize. But there are people on. Chelsea's on.
Does anybody have any public comment? Anybody looking to make public comment? I'm trying to.
No, there's no hands up, but I have to put in, I'll put in a little thing in the box right now, too.
Now, advantage your second before I move on. We're going to keep the same zinlin for. Uh, going forward for the rest of this year as well. Have anyone come off to that first?
Maybe keep the same.
I keep it.
All right. Seeing no public comment, I will now listen to the regular part of our meeting, starting with the personnel update from Mike.
All right, thanks. Just trying to get a couple of things worked out. Hopefully, everyone was able to receive the agenda and we'll see the board notes. Uh, you know, so what we wanted to do is take the opportunity while we're together to do a couple of things. And then the first that I would like. Have a board accept. The resident. Uh, Rihanna Streeter. Uh, she's the B C B A. And Clark Wilkins.
Are you? Yeah, sorry.
The nomination.
I will make that uh, motion to accept with regret the resignation.
I'll, I'll second it as a chair. Shannon made the motion that I didn't call for, but my question, do we have a reason as to why is it?
She got a, a position closer to a phone. So. So this, that's the reason.
Clearly, if there was something that couldn't be discussed, we've been discussing on public, but.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
And then. So I appreciate that and.
We have to vote on that first.
Yeah.
So it's uh, any further questions for Mike on that around a street or B C B A resignation at Clark Wilkins? Okay, we'll call the vote on it then. All in favor? One, two, three, four, none opposed, carry on our way. So that would pass for you.
All right, then the, the second piece. Uh, that we, we'd like to take a look at is the. And we talked this about at the chairs meeting the other day is take a look at retitling the position. At Clark, at Clark Wilkins as from assistant principal to associate principal. Um, the reason being is, you know, we've had four assistant principals. Overseeing student services and special ed in the last seven years at Clark Wilkins. Uh, that type of turnover is, is unhealthy. Uh, and. The, the model that they have been using there where that one assistant principal. Is at Clark three days a week and then they rotate the principal and the other assistant principal through. We feel moving forward is we want someone to be there and be, you know, work, be there full time in that building. We know from the hiring market right now is that we post assistant principal positions. We are hiring first, first year assistant principal.
First avenue job.
And so we don't want to continue on that trend for this position. Uh, so we advertised as associate principal and we were looking for someone on like their second or third. Administrative position uh, and the pool has reflected that. So as they started to go through the interview process, so um. I wanted to uh, inform the board. You see the, the. The memo, the hiring process memo there. Um, I can tell you, we might expedite that. Uh, as, as demand for candidates. Uh, presents itself. And if that happens, I will notify Tom. You know, that uh, that, that we are likely to do that. So I really wanted to inform. The board. I don't think we, we don't have a, a vote or anything like that. I just wanted to, you guys.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Does that name change? Is that something that is, exists elsewhere in New Hampshire? I've never heard of that term. Okay.
Yeah.
And it reflects what you talked about.
Yeah, a little more responsibility and more experienced.
And my other question is like, with the budget that we just passed, didn't have a disminut, presumably, so how does it work with the budget having this isn't where not the associate?
Yeah, and we're going to keep the salary as budgeted. For the previous assistant principal, we think that's high enough to.
Was the name changed? Is that an issue at all? Or you can just, this is money is important. Okay, all right. Thanks.
If you could have any secondary principles, you couldn't. I guess you could, but still just staffing, right? You're still in, we're all in staffed category, so we don't have any control in the administration.
That's right.
And we, we talked about this in class, we only accepted Alison's resignation. Remember we talked about. We immediately started acquiring about how we can restructure this to be a success. This is the fruits of those discussions. To move to an associate. Um, and then Michael talking about the next piece of this that helps.
So. Um, all right. So the next position, my friends, is uh.
It's not one we can bow it around.
Want to talk a little bit about uh. A special education, local education agency representative. We budgeted for point six. Uh, in the fall last year. Um, and. We realized that as we were looking for, for that position that. We really could use a full-time person as we did some of the restructuring. Uh, here. Um, we also knew the market, which is driven by market. That we weren't going to find a high quality, as high quality of a person at point six. Um, we. Uh, worked, Heather and Amy worked. Uh, at length to, to go through the, the grant and we'd like to fund. You know, point six as the budget, but we want to fund the remaining. You know, fifty-eight thousand um, out of. Uh. Or what we want to use a fifty at IDA. Uh, Amy, you want to add anything to that or is that pretty straightforward?
Yeah, that's it. The, the total budget um. Was seventy-five through a six. So that's the salary plus uh, related benefits. Uh, and health and dental. Uh, we determined the actual amount um. Uh, is one thirty-three eight. So the difference is the fifty-eight, five seventy-six that Mike mentioned. So we'll still keep the budget same. So it will be budget neutral. And the remainder will be funded from the IDA.
For this first year?
Yeah.
But it would represent an increase for the future years.
Yeah.
Be only one year allowed, right?
Yeah, so for next year, um. The point six would be in the default, but the point four would not be in the default. Um, and actually the point. Anything for IDA, um, we would not be able to fund from IDA because it's a known.
Second year, right, right, right.
And we would take that into consideration as we build our budget for the Amherst School District.
Is the workload point six, are you using a better person that you can buy that stuff for? Or is it really going to take a point, a one point O?
It's going to be shared between two buildings. Clark Wilkins and Amherst Middle School.
And I knew that because I was learning to do this and that.
Yeah, right.
And it's really Wilkins. Well, the associate principal will be doing all Clark LEAing. Part of that associate principal responsibility. And this will be a one through eight position. But it goes along, we need some support at Wilkins for the LEAing. Because Allison won't be LEAing because she, that, that position will be at Clark. I don't know if that makes sense, but I just said.
We're trying to handle on all these grants if it's. If it's worth having the staffs go after to get these grants, right? And what do we get? It's like this hard cost and like, I don't know, are we going to be getting more and more grants now, you think? Is that?
Yeah, we don't really know. Fed has, Fed hasn't told us our allocation yet.
Is there overall? Vision that the overhead is, the high vision overhead is high in this district? Or do you think it, it's low or about right?
Some areas it's not.
For some areas, yeah, Steve said some of that areas.
But overall, you think it may be about right, like roughly about right? Or is it way off one way or the other?
Overhead for what?
Like administration and all this.
Administration of the grants or?
Grant, the whole, the whole.
Admin, admin in Amherst is not high. Overhead for admin in Amherst is not high. There's other areas that we might be considering.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So any other questions on that? On that? All right. So there's three names. I can talk a little bit more in detail in non-public. But uh, there's Michelle Belanger. There's Callie Dwyer, her math teacher and a learning specialist, uh, Mrs. Elizabeth Cairns. So.
Been a good day.
So. We uh, have those three names. Uh, we can talk a little bit about it more in non-public if you, if you'd like. About some details.
Is that for the LEA position or the?
All three.
Oh, I got it.
The, the three, the LEA, the grade seven math and the Amherst's are middle school learning specialist. But I would like, we'll come out in non-public. We'll do that later to, to uh. Prove the whole slate if we could.
This is, I don't know if we need to, do we need to go to non-public even? Is anyone having any reason to go to non-public? That was my next question. So. Do you have any questions you want to ask about it? About the specific candidates, rather than just generic position questions? Because if not, we can just prove it now. If everybody's done, it'd be some happy texts flowing along.
Yeah.
Let's see that. I'll take a, I will try to. Nominate that. I, I missed the names. My, I didn't write them all down, but to nominate those three names as uh, for grade seven math and a learning specialist and full-time LEA for Mike's presentation.
Yeah, the LEA is Michelle Belanger, the grade seven math teacher is Miss Callie Dwyer. And the learning specialist is Miss Elizabeth Cairns.
Perfectly pronounced. I'll make that motion. Motion, take a second.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I already had a timer, sorry. I was ready.
All in favor?
Chris Ollister's going to be super happy.
Welcome.
It's good day. These are good posts. All of them.
And then we will revisit when budget time comes to see whether or not we keep that as full time and because we'd have to put part in operating.
Yes, yep, yes, ma'am.
In theory. If it's, if it is full time. Would special education capital reserve fund be a possibility for that? For a second year?
Why did you do that? You have to do that.
We haven't funded it in the last couple of years. We also had needed to tap into it, if I recall. We haven't done it this year and last year was the concern. We did it last year for.
Been a while since we've hit it.
Yeah, that's why we stopped funding it because it was.
Yeah, we hit a level. It's good.
Yeah. Because we're still at three hundred and change now.
Yeah, we're getting some good interest.
Consecutively.
No, no, I'm sure good at that, but if it's one of those words, depending on what words we have, you could have taken it in. You have started to kind of unit at some point. Um, all right. So anything else on your side on that?
Uh, no, sir. No, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
My full agenda here is hitting on me again, so. Bear with me. Okay, so now our facility. So I crafted a mini agenda to keep us on track here for. Uh, for tonight, sorry, for this afternoon, I should say, knowing that we have a limited amount of time. So Greg and I met last year too, sorry, I mean back up first. The way that I envision us doing this, the, the biggest chunk of our time, I imagine, is going beyond the facility project itself in terms of what is on the ballot this year. What fail, progress we made, et cetera, et cetera. And then what we want to do for next steps. But originally, I think we had a couple of items that we could knock off early on. We have three members of the building and grounds committee. We have to send out nominations for those folks, Greg and I went through the applications. Uh, talk about the property, uh, investigation committee.
Liquid, I could say liquidation.
I was going to say.
Yeah.
I wrote it down too, but that one that you're saying, we'll just automatically sell them. So they're um, setting up the first initial meeting for that and then. Essentially just getting out the invites. You and I can uh, get out those invites. We'll be, we set a date for that. And then talk about the facility project after that. Talk about a survey if you want to, if we're interested in setting up a survey. And then what the charges for the building and grounds, depending on how the conversation in the facility project goes. So. Everybody's good with that. The startup would be nominations for building and grounds. There were nine letters submitted. Uh, Greg and I, after uh, discussing qualifications and discussing some peculiarities, there were a couple of folks that were not town residents. Uh, that had applied. They had, might have had kids in the district now or at some point. Um, and I don't think that we felt comfortable having those folks be on a committee where uh, they're not necessarily tax payers here. As valuable as their experience might have been, um, especially if they're only pushing kids in or they might have had kids that lived here and they weren't living. Uh, in the same town or in the same household. We had a Mount Vernon resident that was interested in joining the committee. So in the end. Uh, Greg and I, I'll speak for, for both of us if you're good with that, uh, recommending that we nominate Obadiah Dart, James Strozier and John Conforti. To the building and grounds committee for the three new members that will go along with the four committee members that were on there already. Uh, I think with all three of those, they come from some different diverse backgrounds without some sort of facilities or some sort of budgeting experience in there. I believe John Conforti also has some uh, real estate law in there as well. I'm going to go through and find all the information on their resumes. We've all seen the applications at this point. Uh, I think the other item that we wanted to do was offer up to Mr. Skokinger from Mount Vernon to sort of the liaison to come down to the meetings and just be able to be a fly on the wall and listen in and. Be able to report back to Mount Vernon and then vice versa as well. As they go through their studies, it'd be good to have. Uh, somebody to be able to present the building and grounds and to the board, keeping them informed of what Mount Vernon is doing with their committee as well on their. Facility project and study that they're putting together for this year as well. So. Uh, any questions? Greg and I are certainly open to answer any questions that you might have for those. And Greg, if you want to add anything to it.
I just want to add that the building ground meetings are all public meetings. Anybody, the residents are not, are, are able to come and we thought there were a lot of resumes there. That I would have liked to have those experiences at the meetings, but now the voting numbers, we decided. So I hope everybody that applies does get involved because uh, everyone seemed to have. A good background to bring new opinions and expertise to the, to the community. So thank, I want to thank everybody for applying for that as well.
Yeah, and I think if we can agree on those, the ones that we have, uh, certainly communication, I can practice the communication to indicate that we love that the other folks continue to stay involved and. And they're more than welcome to come to meetings and everything, but um, for those reasons, we went with uh, the one that we recommended.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. Thank you both for taking the time to go through those. I agree with you, Greg. I was really impressed with the. Slate of community members who put their name in and the experience that they brought. So I'm excited to, to work with those individuals and. And hope that the others will, will stay involved as well and follow up. So, yeah, that sounds great. Do we, do you want, do we need a nomination?
Yeah, I think it's, it's good to do that just for a subcommittee that we're directing because it's, they're going to have an official charge, so to speak.
I would be happy to make the nomination for the um, recommendations that. Tom and Greg have brought forward for the building and grounds committee.
Okay. All right, second.
All second.
Any further discussion? Okay, so all in favor of nominating Obadiah Dart, James Strozier and Jonathan Torby to the committee? Two, three, four, five. And none opposed. So we will send out uh, invitations to those three gentlemen.
That's why, uh, yeah. First and all, I said.
Yeah. All right, so we'll send out invitations and we'll send out thank you notes to the other um, six committee members and encourage involvement. So.
Just having gone through this now, um, for my first subcommittee of committee members, I think it'd be nice next time if we. Explain the kind of what we're looking for because the range of responses we got, some people had like. Full resumes who had like sentences. And I don't think it's fair um, for us to decide on the qualifications and metrics after we've received resumes. So. Like we did when we had uh, interviews for board member replacements last year, there was like a policy that covered what must be addressed. I think we want to put into policy and say, we should have a practice at least to say. Please tell us your. You know, relevant experience, things we cared about, you know, do you live in Amherst? Do you own property in Amherst? Like. Where you know what the schools, you know, whatever, something that has some type of criteria. I felt bad for some other people that just responded with less information.
That they were interested as opposed to.
Yeah, letters of interest is kind of being brought, right?
Right, let's, let's call for something.
Good idea.
That's a good point, Greg. I wrote that down so you can have that for future committees that we need to put together.
Thanks.
Okay, um, moving on. So the next item I had on our agenda was the. Property study committee. So Greg and I are the two board members that are on that committee. It was uh, Tim and I, we didn't get a chance to do anything before the election. So now Greg and I will head this up. And essentially this is just looking at the twenty odd properties that we have in town here, determining. What properties are valid for the school to be a part of, what properties that we may want to find another use for, and then collaborating with the town to determine, is there a town need for this? Uh, is it something that can pass off of the town? A lot of these properties are being maintained by town personnel anyway, whether it's recreation or whether it's. It's not public works that we call it, but DPW, that's what I've been trying to think of all day, which is public work. So uh, if it's DPW, whoever is. Maintaining those parks that we want, that we're not doing for them anyway. So at some point, do we even need to be involved? And if we just pass it off and then they can uh, maintain it and, and do what they need. So. Uh, I'm thinking something probably in early June, Greg, may be good. And then the five different groups that I had thought of that need to be involved and happy to take suggestions on other groups to reach out to. But selectmen, planning boards, zoning, recreation, public works, and then we also should have the historical commission. Our conservation commission on there as well.
Yeah, and the rec department, uh, director has already expressed interest in.
Oh, I bet.
Yeah.
We should, we should look for, sorry to hit your feet there. We should uh, also look for non-government entities. So I don't know if that's, if there's like developers or who would it be necessarily to. Um, consider that would not be.
Yeah, my only concern is that I, I feel. It's a good question, but I don't know where we, I think members of the public should be on there as well. Should we just open up for any public members if we want to try to get a couple of public members?
It may be a public meeting, right? You could have it as a public meeting.
Yeah, it's a point, it's, and I. But I feel like building the rounds is for a point of having a public tent, but there should be somebody to represent a, uh, you know, maybe a couple of members from the public on there. Just because, sorry, my concern is to start getting developers in there. It's going to be a. Conflicting interest potentially, the historical, somebody may look at this building and say, this would be a great. Whatever, and historical commission, they say, well, we would use this, or the town, they say, you can use this for offices or something on.
I'm, I'm just saying we should have everyone, we should have that stakeholder or that interested party. Be aware that we are potentially getting.
Let's, let's talk about if we have that first meeting and figure out what that would be what, because I don't know what that invite would look like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have.
Kind of posting paper or something like that, like chamber, that's in the chamber.
I don't know. Yeah, I figured administrative something down there.
So my recommendation would be for like the town and the, for us to kind of get our ducks in order before we start bringing like developers and outside groups in until we determine.
Yeah. These town committees first, just with them and then maybe they have some better experiences to who else, you know, can reach out to. Like your, your points validate, there should be some outside interest, not just the. From the town aspect of it, um. Because there may be benefit in selling some of these properties and the town may look at it and say, we don't want to do that, you know, we're terrified of development anywhere in town and it may have counterinterest to it. So. Um, variety of. Perspectives would be helpful.
Just even as a, like a resident, if we're just moving it from one government to another government entity, I don't really care. You know, as much as, as I might, if it goes from a public entity to a private, then I might be very interested in. And say Birch Park, no more frisbee golf, what do you mean? So I, I. So I think that's an important thing to think about earlier.
It doesn't necessarily need to open up unless it goes in that, unless we start thinking in that direction, right?
If we're thinking about getting it out of our district, then I'm saying it, it should be open minded to any. Any sell, any custom, any buyer. We shouldn't say.
I don't think we've made that determination yet.
I don't understand why.
So that's a point of the committee is.
If, if you want to sell something.
I don't think we've said we want to sell anything though.
I don't, as if, if you want to sell something.
Solution. And the, the reality is we have to look and seeing, selling something has to be an option. It's on the table.
And it works. Did you consider to say, I think it's a sale to town, is that through the sale or is that?
Has to go to legislative body.
Okay.
So I have to go to, we have to go to the warrant. The legislative body agrees to sell Birch Park for, and you get a commercial evaluation or residential evaluation. That's what you, and you put it out to bid and you just get an appraisal right of the property and then you set a price.
Do it in town for extra?
No, not if you're giving it to those guys.
No, it's different.
Oh, that would just be a hand.
I think if it was a kind of, it would be kind of like. If you, like when I sold my, sold my car to my parents for a dollar and officially a dollar changed hands, but.
That would still require the legislative body to vote to.
Accept.
Send it to the town and the town have to probably vote to expand and their warrant would be a dollar to receive. Because the legislature don't have the authority to transfer it to me by warranting legislative body.
And, and I do think just keep in mind that while you own these things and they were maybe given to us for lots of different reasons. They were given to us as a public school district. And so the intent of the original people who. Who either sold these properties to us or gave us these properties was for us to manage them as a public thing. So looking at that first makes sense to me. For, is there anything that would be useful to another thing in town before we, we go, well, hey, any, any takers kind of thing?
Yeah, the deed charter, you're absolutely right. Because where I came from, Maple Street School could, we were looking, it could only be used for educational purposes.
Yeah.
That's it. We could not, it was donated with that. It's on the deed.
So, so just make sure that as we're looking, that we look for any of those, that it was. Either explicitly stated or, or probably the intent of the people who, who gave them to the school district.
Because if they think it's only educational purposes, you can do stuff that, but you can't sell it for residential. And we had it on, it's elementary school and hop was a educator, it was exactly the wording on the deed. Different kinds of uses for educational purposes.
So before we waste too much time being like, woo-hoo.
Yeah.
And we know for a minute, Birch Park was something that was. Voted on by the town to purchase that property. And then they voted turning down building a school on it at the same time, which was wonderful legislative.
That's different. But, but it is, we'll have some of them look at all the deeds to see. You own a lot of property, strange property.
Yes, generating revenue for the.
Can we talk about this in May, even like electronically, but we have meetings next June, just so I can know where everything is at twenty five?
Yeah, I'm going to find that stupid.
Okay, thanks.
There's a thing that I stuck with Tim put together that had at least. Yeah. He, he did a nice job on it, actually. It's like, oh, that's what.
And then we can work on setting a date for June and then we can work on uh. Who did invite from the town. The town has to be part of it too, because the town may hang along with us at that speed.
Well, and Birch Park and, I mean, I heard you guys talking about that, but there, it does generate revenue for the recreation department. So.
In what way?
So all the frisbee golf tournaments that.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So when you drive by there on a weekend, that park and lot is shocking.
I think it's called disc golf. I think they're offended if you call it.
Disc golf. Yeah, excuse me. So I mean, I think the great conversations are important to have to understand how the.
I call yours. Yeah, this is also a true one. I call this ball golf.
All right, um, so Greg and I will work on that. And then again, we'll, again, not to, it's not a divestment committee, but looking at, again, you have to study the deeds, look at the properties, work with the town and go from there to find. Um, potential solutions. And then you can secondarily look to invite other folks that have. Potential commercial or even non-commercial interest if it's somebody that's outside of a, a town perspective.
And if anything is this year, your timeline is the warrant. For school district meeting, for annual meeting. So that's the, kind of like, so it's, and budget timeline is the same timeline. You want public hearing only.
Well, what other goals have some, maybe to recommend by the end of the summer, at least have some progress planned with someone. I don't, we'll have a full recommendation. I really will, we'll analyze and look at what we can. Uh, potentially move or potentially make a decision on by then. Okay, all right, facility projects. So we are all well aware of the progress we made in the voting from roughly forty-three percent to fifty-four percent, fifty-three and a half, fifty-four percent. Uh, over the fifty percent margin, but not quite to sixty percent that we needed to get. And so now I think it's uh, essentially what we need to do tonight is to determine next steps. And then we have to determine what work, if any, we want building and grounds to, to do on this part of the project. Building and grounds is going to have a bigger charge overall. Uh, they're going to be looking at continued phasing of the middle school roof project. And then we still need them to work with Roger and administration on any recommendations specifically when it comes to the capital needs assessment. Which will be part of our conversation as well, looking at. What do we do for Clark, for Wilkins at this point? What is our next step with this? What do we have coming up for projects? If we need to change track or we want to change track a little bit, knowing that if we change track, it's probably going to get off the timeline, putting anything on the ballot for next year. I think all of us are, maybe not you, Greg, I can't speak to that, but knowing the crunch that we were under at November, December timeframe last year, trying to get something hastily put together. Just for the length of time that it took from July to December to have a, a, a package and a project with Vanwell and DEW. Like to have something done sooner than that. Uh, so I think we have a couple of different options here. Next steps, items that we need to consider are status quo. Do we continue to go forward with this? What do we have coming up with the CNA? Um, that needs to get done, big projects in the next five years that would be delayed or that we can, that would be mitigated by the building of Wilkins project and that has to be part of this. And then. Do we want to consider any further consolidation, whether it's something else with kindergarten pre-cable, eliminate that building. And uh, change a consolidation plan to be able to um, get back on the map for state funding. So a lot of different questions. That we need to answer today or we start to answer so that we can start to have building and grounds get a charge is only paid. But I think by the end of the summer, we need to have a plan firmly in place to have a good six months to be able to bring it to voters, you know, once the school year starts. I think July and August, nobody's going to be looking for this, but I think once the fall comes and school's back in session, that is when we're going to be. Under the gun to have something ready to go and be able to present. So with that, I will open it to. Any initial thoughts, any initial questions?
I think the first thing we have to do is get. The requirements public side. We talked about, I think our last board meeting, I think. Talked about Elvis sending together to Tom, like our. Desires for like the booklet we're going to publish. Desires for like the booklet we're gonna publish, and have all the old information in it, and maybe new information in it, did everyone?
I don't recall a book being published. What we wanted to cover for today.
Say that again, well, last, we had a board meeting, it was last meeting, April eighteenth meeting, I think it was, and we talked about, um, pulling together a. Comprehensive report, pulling out data that was already collected in previous years, and kind of organizing into one document of some kind.
Are we talking about consolidation?
Consolidation of information?
No, I think it was just more just getting information to us that we needed for this meeting, if you needed any further information, obviously being, you remember, you sent.
Okay, I thought we were talking about, I'm not understanding, this, this is my imagination, we all talked about. Trying to publish one document that had all the information on it, that had, would have everything in one place, people could see.
The Tory, uh.
Yeah.
Like all the work that's been done.
So I mean, I guess. I just had like, say, like, what would be in that, what would it's needed? And then, you know, like find building grounds and kind of go through and find, and, and like write it, like say, here's the things that we know, and then here's the things that are not yet known. And ask us to support them or give it to them if they need information on new stuff. I mean, otherwise, I don't know what else building grounds would do with the Wilkins project.
Well, and that's, that's the question, I mean, building the grounds and the Wilkins project ideas that Shane and I discussed, um, just prior to this. Is do we, and based on some of the questions that you had sent over in that, in your, your email, the right questions that you wanted to have answered was. Is there alternative, are there alternatives to funding? Do we have to go through bonding? Can we do something with a commercial? Can we? Do we have additional elements that we can add to a potential bond, your fundraising example, um, a, as a supplemental funding mechanism? Uh, are there alternatives to the bond? I think those will be items that building and grounds can investigate, building grounds can look at, are there ways that you can make construction? If we do pass something, how would we mitigate that instruction? If there are folks that have safety concerns at an elementary school that's full of kids and full of gun trucks and cranes? Is there a way that we have facilities off campus that can host students while we do that construction as well? We can have them look into that. Um, I think things like that, because to me at this point, my candid opinion. With the work that's coming up at Clark Wilkins, um, and I'll, I'll ask for either if you can pull it up, um. Just, you know, the next immediate five years is on top of your head, in terms of major work at Wilkins, five to ten years. My concern is, we have a project, we made great progress on it this year, um, I think we need to do a survey to find out why people might have voted no on this. If there are any few reasons compared to last year, but for the timing that we have of what's coming up at Wilkins. I don't know that we have the time to be able to shift tracks in any major way.
Or I think you, I mean, Tom, if you keep doing a bad, a poor job, a sub-sixty percent passing job. Will never be able to do a good job, so maybe it's time to pause and say. Let's target not this March, but the following March, let's get everything right, that, that means in the alternate view from what you're suggesting.
So FY twenty-six, one point three million between Clark and Wilkins. And then for FY twenty-five, just going back, it calls out outdoor courts for ten thousand three hundred, FY twenty-six is. One point three, FY twenty-seven goes to AMS roof membrane for three eighty. FY twenty-eight goes into. Three hundred and twenty-two thousand between Clark, Wilkins, and AMS, and then year five, which is FY twenty-nine. Calls out four hundred and forty-nine thousand between AMS and Wilkins and Clark. And again, that's the onsite inside plan that we've carried over and trying to follow the best that we can.
Okay. Have we done our own? Have you gone through and looked at anything that must be added to that at this point?
No, I think that's where, um, with the Wilkins project not passing this term, is that where we really need to. Refine this plan, and really at the direction of the board, I know we're moving forward on AMS with phase one, we have a proposed phase two, phase three. It's start looking at our Clark school, and then also starting at whatever we planning for our Wilkins as far as. Following this plan or discussion of the project itself.
Yeah, and I think, so in my mind, I think that would be great work for building and grounds to do with. You know, with you, in terms of refining the CNA, refreshing, updating the CNA. I would not agree with putting a pin in it for a year, um, I do agree, Greg, that we could. Continue to evolve how we're communicating and the depth of the information, and how we're presenting it to folks in a way that's more easily consumable. I don't think it was a, a lack of having answered many of these questions, um, but admittedly, there. There were so many questions and such a, so much information all over the place that we could certainly continue to work on. Pulling that all together and making it more, um, consumable and digestible for folks to have easy access to it. Um, but I would, I would advocate that we continue to move forward with the project that has. Was on the ballot last year and, and that has, um, momentum.
So one thing on the momentum thing, I, I, one much last time, so I had an analysis, we should probably talk about what we each did, our analysis on the vote. There, so in twenty twenty-three, March, there were fifteen forty-nine yeses on article twelve. And then twenty-four, there were sixteen thirty-eight, so you, there's an increase of a hundred and thirty-something. And the no, in twenty twenty-three, there was nineteen eighty-one, and this year, there, this twenty-four, there was. Fourteen thirty-one, so a decrease of about five hundred, right? So really, the percent is up because the no's. Didn't show up, right? So I, I worry that. The no's decreased total by five hundred into one forty. Yeah, the no's didn't switch to yeses as much as they, there were more no's that didn't vote. This year, more than twenty-three no's in twenty-four than there were no's up to yes. So when you say momentum, um, it maybe it looks like the no voters are maybe tired or not interested as much, um. But there seems to be maybe a limit, that's why I was trying to say today, like, it looks like a limit of how many yes voters you'll get, so I think. The more turnout would be last likely at the sixty, that's why I was trying to get to that one public comment, that, um. We had, so, when you say momentum, I mean, it just, it looks like actually it's like inertia, like you've hit, you've hit some line, and you're just like, maybe approaching. You're asking so, and you're kind of, you know, stabilizing at the yes, whereas the no seems to be a big drop off, so I don't know if that's. How you read it, but that doesn't seem like the, let's just keep going kind of vibe, and I know we each have our own bias about this, so, um. But it just, to me, it doesn't look like a momentum.
See, because I don't know that it's biased, because I think, I think bias is, it, it's a little bit, to be interpreted as uned- uneducated about this. And I don't think that anybody on this board is uned- uneducated about this project, some of us have been involved with this since two thousand.
I agree, I don't agree, the bias means that.
Yeah, no, but I, I think that, you know, because my bias was not on a new school building when I started, and I was very vocal about that. Number one meeting specifically in this room where it said, alright, we'll build a new school, I'm like, what the hell are we doing here? Like, slow down, pump the brakes a little bit, so. I think with the stuff that we've studied here is. We've, I think we've validated this, and maybe we've not validated widely enough to the public, and maybe that's the next step, is to your point, Greg. Getting the information we have, putting it in a more palatable format, because in fairness, it's in a few locations, on the website, we have the Google Drives. And we have some information that's probably a little bit dated in terms of, for example, the CNA plan, maybe that needs to be refreshed to, to really focus in in the next ten years. Something that Shannon mentioned for building grounds, but I think that the information. Doling that out in a better format might be helpful, um. Whether or not people are gonna roll the water, drink is another story, but we can.
I think they would, I think people are more interested this, uh, August than pri- prior Augusts, but obviously, I'm more involved than most people.
Okay, so this August?
Or right now, I think people, we're getting a couple of comments every board meeting saying, hey, either keep going, or this is a moral stop. So we're getting like people calling out in April, May, I don't know if that's normal in previous years, I wasn't on the board, so is that normal?
It was in April last year, just after the vote, but I think it, it tailed off in the summer, like it does for.
Okay, and there was something in common, so maybe that's good, and I, what I always want to see more than just we've mentioned, like I do, pretty saying like the things that I asked, I also would like to see. The breakdown of special needs programs in Wilkins grades, and you know, what kind, what kind of environment do we need? Because having a, having square footage initially the right space, we're seeing that now, where people are in like loud cubicle areas, right? Like, is there, is it, is more smaller rooms better than the bigger rooms that are on the current design, like?
The current design has smaller spaces, one-on-one spaces, is that?
Right, is that, is that the right amount?
They didn't, right on, spaces are right obstruction.
Both, for what right configuration of space for the kind of special education curriculum that you're teaching? Because we haven't, I haven't got answers on how many children needs kids you'd like to have, what kind of space is needed, I know it's hard to reject, but. I'd like to see that at least attempted for this.
So.
Report.
So there were, and there are on the Slack channels, and again, I think this goes to more of that, like, we need to. Continue to try to pull this information together, but I don't know how much time you had to delve into, to everything that exists here and that you have access to. But the, um, both architectural firms that we hired, so LBA and Vanwell. Spent significant amount of time, I don't know how many hours, with our administrative leadership team. Sitting down and going through all of the program requirements, and part of those program requirements. Involved what type of, um, spaces we needed for all of our programs, which includes our special. Education programs, My Time, um, Stars, and the things that we don't currently have the adequate space for. If I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that you haven't seen it in a black and white list that really makes it clear to you.
It's more of that, I've been asking, what is objection to special needs population, uh, because we don't have that. And I've told the, it, what was.
So I, that's two different questions, so the.
It should be some, some mapping.
You've asked, um, so it is very difficult to project program student needs.
We know what we have.
Those are low incident, highly complex.
Right.
And, and so we, we, the space is there. We, and we also input in flex space for growth, but the, the. Current school was never designed for the program, right?
Right.
School been programmed, this is designed for program. Um, it's just, they're called low incident.
I mean, so like AMS, AMS is rooms where there's students that have their own facilities, their own bathrooms, their own, I think, sink, like. A big setup, right? Like, are these spaces flexible, or coming run to these spaces that makes it, you know?
Yeah, swap if needed. Okay, probably, there was program space, both programs on the design.
Yeah, i- in the design.
Okay, and then.
Bigger than what we have.
How do we know we're not gonna be like? I, I, I provided in the Wesley's report a couple of years ago, projections of special needs population at Wilkins based on state and federal data. I never had any feedback on it.
So.
I'm wondering how crazy that is, is it, am I, am I right, or am I way off, or why, like?
So.
How are we building this thing?
For program, so the programs, low incident disability, that's the category.
Right, right.
They are rare. So we don't know how many we're going to have, now we can look at the last ten years, wrap it and project it out, happy to do that.
That's what I'd do, and also, but what, what's the other kind of, what's the other kind of, non-program, what's that called?
Just, um.
Inclusion, is that the right word? So that's, that's someone like, uh, has like a speech, speech impediment or a hearing disability?
Well, you know, specific learning disorder.
Reading, like dyslexia, would that be a?
That'd be, that'd be a specific learning.
So, isn't that the one that we're trying to address in the room at Wilkins that currently has like cubicles, and it's like.
Those are interventions.
Intervention space, so we have designing interventions.
That's a little different.
That is, it's special.
It's under student services.
Okay, okay, so between that intervention and the.
Incident was.
Were you talking about inclusion?
Inclusion. I, I mean, those spaces, I'd like to say it was broken down, right, this is probably a human word.
They're all broken.
On, on what? On the design, building design?
There's a document that, that Vanwell provided where it's all.
I'd love to see it, never seen it.
So, so that's where I think, I'm asking, the lesson to this, I think, is that. We, we can put this together, because it's been. We talked about this in deliberatives, we talked about this in other meetings, this information has been presented, we've talked about this in the design phase. I, Greg, I swear to you.
I believe it has, I haven't seen it.
And it's like, I have design plans that we have now, so if we looked at the presentation, we presented it in deliberatives.
Yeah.
You will see intervention stays mixed in among regular.
I did see that, that's true.
So if I could pause just a second here, and I think that. Some things have been successful, and some things we feel like we need to expand from, and I get it. What we knew was more successful was we've tried, trust me, from the many years of this, we've tried different approaches. And sometimes just that, blah, here's everything, was not helpful, because people would get overwhelmed, and they're like, I, it's too much. Give me, give it to me bite size, I need to have a soundbite. So then we had much more success this year, with having a single page that was like, here you go, bottom line. Here is last year, this year, what's the difference, why are we still in the best? And it was far more successful and being digested and getting attention. I feel like what we need right now is somewhere in between, where we say, okay, we still have that quick and easy soundbite that says, where are we now? And then we need to have a few areas that maybe help explain, because to answer your question, it's like, yes, and. There's no way to know, yes, we know that the types of spaces we've designed have been proven to be more effective, and no matter whether you have. Ten kids who need it or two hundred, that type of space is more appropriate. So that answered one part of your question, is that type of space and the way that we have designed it more appropriate for this type of program? Yes, that is a absolute hundred percent, and no doubt about it, yes. Then you, you personally understand a lot about that, or have we maybe educated our public about what that space may look like, it's very different. And that's where maybe we could do better, right? So we could say, for example, here's a type of space that we know that right now. Is not contributing the success of our program, or really having to do workarounds that we don't love. And here's where this would look like this, most likely that we know is far more successful, I think that's one thing.
Okay.
And I think that's one thing that's a very reasonable request, right, that we could put into a, for example, here's the type of program that will be much benefited by having. Thoughtful, pre-planned space rather than post-planned, let's make it work any way we can. So I think that answers part of your question.
And it's, and to me, it's like. More than, it's a multi-year vision, not just like what's better for next year, but like, how.
Yeah, and so.
Is this right school for the twenty-first century?
Yeah, but, but it just makes sense, and I think it would make sense to you, whether you're, you're an ex- have expertise in this or not, it would make sense to me.
Right.
Because I need to work one-on-one with someone, having a somewhat spacious space without a lot of distraction would be a good.
No, it's, I think, that's, I'm worried about what we have now, and that's why it's so hard to know on this, because like, what we have now is really like not helpful, not. And it's like, well, I want to get the right one, I don't want to just spend extra money to fix a problem with it, and then cause like a bigger.
Yeah, so I think that we can, we could absolutely have some categories that we know are kind of some top, because I also wonder where the question was with about. Do we really need a gym? Well, we have lots of reasons why, yes, we think we do. Plus, it would also support the community and a greater number of things going on and all of that, so it would have a couple of different things, but we could take some categories like those. Like special education, like why the heck do we need a full gym for an elementary level?
Right, well, you have more space, for sure.
And, and all of those things, and we could take some of those categories, and so, yes, you still have your soundbite that is easier, but for those who want a little. Next layer of information, you can give that next layer of information for here is a little bit more about some specifics about this design. And why we think it actually improves not only more space in general, but more thoughtful space. That will serve us for the long term.
Let me see, like, at one point you got more attention, but you actually got three hundred and fifty fewer voters coming out last year than the previous year, so. I, I get a focus on that, that the yeses were up a little and the no's down a lot, and that's, that's the big change in percentage. So I don't know if you want to say that your one pager was.
Well, I will say, I think first meeting with people, they felt more informed and less overwhelmed at the same.
Okay.
So again, I can only tell you from having actually spoken to hundreds of people over the past. And I would have been probably going to thousands of people over the past seven years, that I could tell you both my personal perspective from, from lived experience. And actual talking to people and what they, and what they have told me, so I can't speak for everybody, obviously. But I can tell you that we definitely were told, yeah, yeah, we appreciate, but it's too much, too much, like, just bring it down. And so when we boiled it down, we, we were able to, because then they could expand from that and ask things, different questions.
Okay.
So I feel like, I feel like it's absolutely reasonable to say, we still need to do that, that still needs to be a way to consume what we're giving them. But then we can look at some very specific categories that I think are of great interest, and people would want to know about, and actually bolster our case, right? To say, this is why having a very thoughtful program for this category will serve us short-term, long-term. And here's what we've done to very thoughtfully address it, and, and give a little more information about that, here's another place that we very thoughtfully looked at it. And will, like you say, short-term, long-term, we really need to show that we, this is not a flavor of the moment. Like, we use language that was very specific this year, Shannon and I did a lot of work on those slides to say, this is. A timeless traditional in many ways, we really tried to keep it simple, we tried to be. We wanted it to be space that is not just whatever the flavor of the moment is, because things change, and we know that.
You want, yeah, classical timeless design, right? But the other thing about the deliberative session, I think some of those slides took a lot of time on, and. I tried to help correct some of the mistakes on those slides about ways and means supporting design, you know, I told Tom on the Saturday before. Deliberate, tried to shout to you, no feedback.
So following public comment with public, the public hearing in January, and I'm glad you brought this up. You sent Terry and I an email telling us we did a great job at the public hearing, where that slide.
You sent Terry and I an email telling us we did a great job at the public hearing where that slide existed. And you had some feedback about the seventh and eighth grade conversation. So we tweaked that, you didn't say anything to me about that slide.
I did on, okay, maybe I should.
Four deliberatives, so.
When I first saw it, that's what I understood.
Is when you saw Tom.
Yeah.
Didn't talk to me.
Right, Tom told you that day, hopefully it's Saturday after.
On Sunday.
Okay.
So I went back and rewatched to make sure that I wasn't. Mischaracterizing. That day. And that meeting.
Do you stand by the view that?
What they favor, you said. Option two, all the way, absolutely, I stand by that.
Okay.
So hold on, this is not going to help us, Matt, because we're, Matt, we're just getting this, Matt.
No, I didn't want to do the argument, I what I want to do is that.
Man, we voted on it, we had a casual roll call, it doesn't matter.
What I want to plan is that, like with her saying communication, I think that. That issue being up in the air is a problem, whether whether however it resolves, we want to be. Inclusive everyone's actual.
Well, if you would like it to be more formal this year, then certainly that. And it could be a more formal because.
It doesn't matter at this point, if from now on, anything we do with filling rounds, we'll take a vote on, because it's it's a fine show up to make. But when nobody argues back on Shannon saying, so we're we're in agreement for this is the consensus of this group and nobody pushes.
I did in the video, I did, the video is out there and I did say. I did, if you want to have the argument now, I'll say, I'll say, I did say in the video, if you're only ever ten, the two options, this is the better of two options. And I went on to why I wasn't fully on board and Shannon's response was, it sounds like you're not fully on board, it's like, yeah, okay, so Shannon understood I was not fully on board. We were, that's why you vote, that's why Sharon was supposed to hear all the votes. And we had very specific wording, you go up or down on the wording given.
And you will be clearer about this and more formal about this going forward, it's the only way to stop that from happening again. And it's a it's a fine shut up, we'll make sure that we we do that, it's a good reminder that, you know, we need to be formal on these, we have these on the record, so. Perfect, we'll we'll do that going forward. I think the bigger piece to get back to now is that. The communication aspects of this, we have more time now, so I think we need to. To Terry's point, we're going to present smaller chunks on this, maybe a smaller chunks spread out over a period of time, essentially doing the same thing that we were doing now, but. Talking about the special needs program, how much of this is grown, how much money this is saving us over. Tuitioning kid out of district when it's two hundred and fifty grand a year of district transportation for a kid, let alone whatever the program is.
That's a lot of work, you guys feel like you're swatting at these like flies, why don't we ask in a survey or whatever, ask people open a question of like. What do you want to see in this offensive reporter? What what if you're a no voter, help us understand. What it is, and some things maybe are are options we can overcome, maybe some are, and then that. I I just sit down on the outside for a while, I see you guys go through a lot of really hard work and good work. And I just see swatting what you think is like the no reason at the moment, but I think compiling nos now. Would be helpful for everybody and then say, look, we've worked with the no voters to overcome uncertainty or whatever we can do. And we did change the design in response, right, and that would be helpful.
Well, let's let's go to the survey question now, because we we have.
Just say one quick thing, um the board commissioned a NESDEC, a special education report for K, I don't know if you've seen that. Happy to send it to you, remember the NESDEC? It has a number of students on IEPs, over some graphs and some costs, happy to send it to you.
Wonderful.
Not ten years.
Wonderful.
But I'll start there, because the board asked us to do, actually, I think it was last year, I don't know when it was. But I'm happy to send, I apologize, Tom, but.
Thank you, I'll match it to mine, so go ahead.
I will send it to you.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm not saying it's everything, but at least we we have a report from a third party about special education numbers and cost, remember that thing? I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
He's sending it to everybody.
Okay, yeah, I'll send it to everybody.
So to Greg's point regarding a survey, I think it's a good time to move into this, uh I think the survey is going to help us determine what. Uh partially next step we can take, whether it's better communication, if it's different communication, if it's information gathering, if it's um. Design change, what any number of aspects there might be on that, so. Asking voters what information they need, that could ask the no voters, if you voted no, what information do you need to be able to vote yes? Uh I think that's a valid question, but we can certainly.
Or changes to the school, but leave a little more broad about what what don't you like about the proposal? Instead of information, because it could be clarity question or it could be a content question, we want to capture all the. Reasons, I think.
I'm just thinking simply, if you voted no.
Why?
What you, you know, why, what information or, you know, yeah, why?
The more open ended the better. How many responses have you gotten in the past? I think Victoria said you got like a full, like a thousand one here, is that true?
The first, the first year there were like over a thousand, and that year was great because. Not great, but people were were more attentive because we were streaming everything, it was during COVID.
Oh, right.
So, which is weird to say this, but like I felt like engagement was up for like televised, not televised.
Yeah, right, right.
Televised was anything, streamed meetings, um and I believe that was the same summer that the town was doing their master. Planning survey as well, maybe it could be off, there was another survey, anyway, it piggybacked at the same time as another survey that went out and people were hyper engaged. So that first year was certainly the the most productive for number of responses, and I don't know the number of responses off the top of my head. Um but I think it's kind of declined, um.
Okay, so we can handle sub thousand open-ended surveys, don't you think? If we got.
What?
Sub one thousand responses, we can handle open-ended responses.
I don't know that should be all open-ended, I think there's a lot of comments to read, but.
You hope no, I mean, and then you added some.
I think we need some guidance.
Yeah, so, you know, with the. The survey we just did, we partnered with Isobar Public, which is a vendor connected to Voltrix. Uh Voltrix is one company that specializes in in data analysis. And uh it's used quite heavily through the private and public sector and specifically at higher ed, um. And I was very pleased with their. Their expertise in this area, and when we developed the start and end time survey. You know, we really said we want to keep the questions. As as similar to the ones that have been asked in previous years to look for trends. Uh and that company was very easy to work with, um. So if we're going to produce any surveys for for uh our community. Right, and I wanna be as professional as we can.
How much does that cost?
Uh it varies on the survey, but we have um. Uh a retainer basically with this company, and then, you know, there's different ways to kind of. You know, go about producing the survey, some is driven by our labor, some driven by the with their consult with them. So it it depends on the project.
What the cost of the last survey?
Uh. Oh, like a two thousand, um. It was the first one, yeah, it was the first one, so we had to do a lot of work to establish that relationship with them, um.
But it's split between the districts.
Okay, yeah, actually, two thousand is not much.
You know, and so. No, and so it was, it was well done, and uh. So for me, uh I have a meeting with them to debrief the last process, and that is tomorrow, and talk about any future work. So I have no problem having a conversation with that organization to see what that looks like.
And and I would love for you to bring our previous surveys to them, and because I like that thought of having a through line, right? There should always be an open-ended option, but it can't just be, I you have to give people a couple of easy choices. And then if they don't see themselves in any of those or want to say more, then absolutely, and I think that I would, I agree with adding a a question for. What would you like to know more about? Like, is there something that you feel like you've not had adequately answered, we'd like to know more.
And and these guys are, it's their profession, right, so.
Who gets the survey? Who's your emailless, is it?
Well, that's the, with this particular survey, it's not just going to be the. Parents of Amber's residents, we'd have to, you know, find a partnership with the selectmen and see what we could do there.
The rec department has a crazy big email, so the recreation department, so I think that would definitely be.
So I would initially talk to them. They do this for a living. And there's a science behind it, and uh Amy and I learned quite a bit in our conversations with them. Throughout this year, uh so I'll explore that, you know, with this good things and and I'll come back with more information. Um and then the other thing that, you know, I'm I'm. I'm uh looking into, I'm looking into locating all the consolidation work that's been done. Um in previous years, because there has been work done around that topic, there has been conversation, there have been some subcommittees, there's been some presentation. Of what that looks like, you know, whether it's a K twelve consolidation, whether it's a K eight consolidation, whether it's a. Five twelve, there's been conversations over the years here in various topics. I'm going to try to locate some of that, it's easier said than done, um and then.
Sarah has a lot of that.
Yeah.
But that, just to be clear, that that was about right, Peter's work in there was about consolidating the districts.
Correct.
Maybe it's one in one school district, but it wasn't about moving kids from eighth grade to ninth grade, right? It was, I remember Peter presented this page through twelve, Montburn, Amber, Song, or one abuela, or a school board, right, which is not really. It's very different than the seventh and eighth grade jump, I'm not saying, so I I know there's a little bit of conflation, just a little.
There were two studies done, there was a streamline work that was that that you're talking about.
The the district's coming together.
Correct.
One board, yay.
Right, and that work was done and then stopped. Because legal came and said this is going to be like impossible.
Right.
To nail members, she was there, um and then there was additional work done after that, that Sarah chaired. And there was another report that.
And what was the charge of Sarah's work? Was it moving kids or was it?
Completely resolved, like like legal came and we were like. Okay, let's put a pin in this and then, but it wasn't really finished, so Sarah picked it up. But there was absolutely the thought of bringing like six through twelve together, that was absolutely one of the.
So there was, no, it was about moving kids too.
It was absolutely one of the options, yes.
Okay, thank you, Terry, because. So moving six all the way up to a one building, a six through twelve.
Well, we're at least saying let's put them all to where we can share teacher, where we can share resources, where we can do things that we can't currently do easily. Yes, there there was absolutely the thought of at least. Administratively being able to have all the same group of people making decisions for and giving services to. A different cohort of of grades.
I thought New Hampshire allowed for a junior high high model or a. Eight through six model.
It is, I didn't understand that.
Said that wasn't allowed, it just wasn't.
I always thought it was district can talk or the level of consolidation, but you're talking about student, okay, thank you, I I.
That idea should be on there too.
I have been on every committee at some point.
I was on the original stream.
I didn't know that.
Many of the conversations along the way, and I have been through many because I was, were the largest. Being Amber's one, and because they tuitioned to us and we looked at, oh, are there ways, because we also were looking at ways to let them up, burn in um kids who. Couldn't do some of the activities because they don't have the work to do some of the right, to let them at least, that's why we were looking at six through. Not so much at fifth, we were still, we're hoping to keep fifth elementary, but we're looking if we did six through eight, and then even looking to have a school within a school. Because if we split it to where we still physically had fifth grade through eighth grade at AMS. But then we had administratively changed it to where fifth grade was Amber's school district and sixth. Through twelve was a consolidated South Egan.
So that actually, that.
Oh, absolutely, I tell you, if it, when I say we looked at every.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah, I wasn't on that committee.
Put kids into a building of some sort within this area, you look at that.
This is Sarah's.
That is a re, so there's two things in in my language is, that is a reconfiguration move. You're reconfiguring your schools, consolidation is one board. And and I I those two words are different, but six, that's why everybody, only the word I ever heard was consolidation. Six through nine is not consolidation, that's reconfig.
Right here.
In my language, going back to, I tried to reconfigure schools, close a school and reconfigure schools. I didn't have to consolidate, I had one board. But uh thank you, so if we could, I don't know what word you want to use, but those are different things, configuring grade levels. Is different than consolidating districts, in my mind, you can say.
Be a reconfiguration in my, because you have ASC and then three years of combined.
Well, Terry just said six or nine goes to South Egan. Yeah, that's a reconfiguration.
It would it would become, it would become part of the cooperative board because that already is cooperative, because they tuitioned in, because all of that, they had to be.
There's no consolidation here, you still get Amber's, and you go to Montburn, it's just.
That is, you can move kids from one district to another.
They get our attention.
I'm not saying you can do this. We call that a weakened, a a different configuration versus a consolidation.
But in your mind, what you consider reconfigurations, moving fifth grade in Wilkins, but also moving sixth grade in the total.
Correct, yes, and and but solid, I I've only, the words.
So the original one was, it was part of the streamline.
And I and I remember Peter Warburton coming to Southwesters and saying, he's dying here. And he's working very hard on consolidating having one.
Yes, that was the intent. That was the intent.
That and start time, so the two, not bringing it up here, those are the two things that Peter Warburton came in height. Those are three things he's brought to me when I was little, this little junior.
There was a lot of motivation to become one district.
And so that report that Amy was mentioning from Sarah Lawrence's committee that she led, it's in the reference materials that were put together for that. May fifteenth twenty three SAU meeting that was facility focused and I can, uh I think. Yeah, so Mike sent some some links to you, it was in that, it was the first one, um where it says this includes quite a bit of information.
Um and one of the major problems was still that we have two different um unions for teachers. And that it would still require.
That is going to be your biggest. That is the one thing that keeps this.
Still have to go to organization security and before COVID. Because.
All together.
Vegan teachers do not, there is no social security for them. So it actually, my understanding was it would literally take an act of Congress to resolve that issue.
And that was the word.
Remember that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
I agree with both of those things, but those are.
Well, unusual, I I don't understand.
I'm not gonna be able to explain everything.
No, no, but I don't understand any of it, because it's, no matter how complicated two two things are, you just. Lose one job, get another job, it's it's a totally.
Yeah, but our entire compensation package is drastically different when you go from, for example.
Right, it will be different, yes.
So again, we we just can't, essentially, union busting that point, we're saying. We're just going to drop.
The union still exists, you're not busting anything, right?
We are, because we're saying you fifty people that are in seventh and eighth grade, you can't be part of this union anymore, we're forcing you to go to this union. Or we're forcing.
So I had an idea that avoids that, and I don't know if you guys. Is not at all, is if we if we find that the annex is an appropriate space for seven and eight. But yeah, I'm not saying that's true, I doubt it is true, but let's. If, well, allow me, allow me, please, if.
Yes.
If seven eight is a good space, a good thing to go in the annex. What, we could take the annex and try to move it from South Egan's board to our board.
Or you can lease the space.
And then say, ah, those teachers that teach seven eight. Are AMS unionized teachers.
You can do that.
And so we decouple the space problem from the union problem, and I and I don't understand if that can talk about or not.
The the solutions that have been brought up by members of the South Egan Board have been the opposite of that.
I know, my idea, I I. I maybe it's novel, I don't know, but I don't think it hits all these all these third rails, I think it's a way, if again, the big F. I'm not saying.
It does, but then think of the other program that that if we touch on the other side of the tracks then.
What?
We have a fourth building in our districts, we have another administrator, we have people over there full time, we have additional special needs instructors that need to be over there full time.
Are those third rails? Nobody's.
Our our goal of years is to not have Clark and Wilkins operating. Which isn't a hell of a long, faraway distance from Clark and Wilkins as it is from AMS to South Egan. H to logistics of that again, start to get into the issues that we're having, that we're hiring another associate principal for that building that can run that. So I I don't know that, yeah, it it solves some of the problems, but it just creates other problems that we're managing.
But those problems seem lower than like act of Congress, union busting accusations, right?
Correct. But then it's South Egan interested in just losing their building and not being able to control, because that's been some of the messaging as well.
I wondered that too, so.
Incorporating those kids in to South Egan gives them a better future.
Right.
Because they're moving out of the rough and tumble streets of Amber's into the.
Smooth operation of being at our school, yes, I understand that, yeah. So is that what's on the table, the use of the annex, I studied if the annex started, I'm like.
So, um. Also tomorrow, I'm meeting with representatives or the executive director from NESDEC. NESDEC uh service that they provide is uh space and facility studies, so Amy, myself and Steve. Um are going to meet with them to see what that looks like, you know what I mean, like just see if it's possible. If it's possible. Right, because I'm not sure exactly of this project. We'd bring it to senior leadership. Talk to Roger, we talk to the principals. And figure out what that looks like. Another organization I threw an email out to. I haven't gotten an email back, is the Superintendent's Association, uh they're quite busy right now with the three oh six discussion, so. Um I'm not sure if they're going to be able to to do work like that right now. Um so to to see if we can, I can, I can tell you. In my opinion. it's not big enough. It's not the right s- space for seventh and eighth grade to go over there outright. You would have to do something, right, to, 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 physically to the building. And.
Both the annex and South Egan.
Yes, and, and we haven't even, we have science lab work that we're working on. No one's really charged Roger to go look into that, you know what I mean, and partner with somebody. Um, I think that it's been casually put out there. And for me, it was a question that was raised to me in my first year. And we've done the work to put out all the information on class size and finding rooms and master schedule. Um, I just don't think it's an appropriate uh, solution to the dilemma that we have with facility and Amherst.
And it still doesn't fix Wilkins.
But, but with that said, I am preliminarily gonna look into it, like, vote it out, and if we decide that that's something that we need to gain more of an understanding, you know, uh, we'll, we'll go through our internal process, we'll bring it to the board, but I, I will say this, and Tom and Shannon, I do think the board would have to vote to charge us to do something, a study like that. Um, and, and that's where we would be.
My, my case comes down to two factors, like it's sorting out price wise, but it's also timeline, it's two, it's gonna take nine months, that I, I think that that's, that prelenty.
And I don't know until I talk to.
Just, just to get the full scope of what that project would look like. Jim?
I just, I have a question, so I guess, and I apologize, I had to step out, um, for a moment, so I might, I missed this, but I'm, how would the work that NESDEC could potentially do be any different than all of the spatial utilization study work that we have seen in the past and that's been turned over and discussed, and, I, I mean, the only thing I could see that would be work that we would spend money on that would be different than what we have, is if we said, okay, we've done the utilization study, we know we don't have the space that we need for the students, we wanna build it, what does that cost? That's work that would require money, and it, but like, how would NESDEC be doing something different than what we've already seen?
Never, never gone through a NESDEC facility study, I don't know the answer to that yet, Roger, I'm not sure, have you ever been a part of a organization? I don't know.
Time on.
So school administrators came and did a study in HOP, and that's where I got from the guy who did it, he said, high schools, uh, eighty percent occupancy is a hundred percent, uh, you know, you want, you shoot for eighty percent. And so you're gonna work with NESDEC, and then maybe they're eighty-five percent, but it's very simple, I mean, they're gonna look at the master schedule, they're gonna look at the space, and they're gonna have some norms or some basic fundamental assumptions that are very similar to these assumptions.
I mean, it just feels to me like we are on this hamster wheel of these same questions, and we work is done, and then if the work, if the answer is not liked by, you know, then we just keep going over it, and I, I don't know, I'm just.
So it's funny, because the hamster wheel seems like Article twelve was up three or four years in a row, right, so, like, that's the idea, that the Article twelve that's going up is the one that's been rejected.
It's been different every year that it's.
Right, but if we're doing it again.
Not.
Okay.
The same.
Okay, well, the study is different, I was, that's that, you can, you can argue that about any.
No, it's actually been a different project with a.
I'm saying this is a different study group doing the study, so there, if, if that, if you consider that a hamster wheel, it's interesting you don't consider this a hamster wheel. Right, so that is what the bias is talking about, it's like, how, how you view this, it's not a bad thing in saying that, you know, we all have this perspective.
Sure.
So at the end of the day, I still have a school that has major systems coming end of life within the next ten years that still have to be addressed, and that whether, even if space were not an issue, which it very much is, even if that weren't an issue, I could not keep the doors open of this current school, I do not address these major things. And so I still need money, and I still need to address these very major things, so where I put seventh and eighth grade is like the last thing on my mind. Because I still need to have a functional elementary, and whether I'm able to say, okay, great, I moved those kids there so I can move one grade up or over or whatever, I could rearrange a little bit, but I still need the building to be safe and functional. And to be safe and functional is still going to cost a lot of money somewhere, and so I still don't wanna throw my good money after bad, thank you. That is still my primary problem, so to waste, and I do believe at this point, it is a waste of time, to continue to waste time answering the same question over and over, when there is no broad appetite for it from administration, there is no broad appetite from the greater board, and there is no broad appetite from this greater board, so you have all of the majority interests who are in here, who do not want to pursue it, you have a, a minority who is very, very interested, I agree, extremely interested, but it still doesn't solve my primary problem. You're, you're asking me whether I wanna wear a blue dress or a red dress, and I'm saying, I wanna wear pants. I don't care what color dress it is, I need to wear pants, I need to have a functional elementary that is safe and appropriate for my students, that is my primary concern, the rest of this is noise.
Right, so, you've been on board for a long time, but you aren't the, the side, the, the people voters are, the people are, so we don't, if the appetite comes from the voter, the survey potentially, right, so we don't know that there's no appetite, actually, there may be a big appetite for this, and for the other matter, and we don't matter as much as board members.
If I need seventh and eighth, how does that give me a functional building for elementary?
When I was reviewing, but kick, kick the can or just, just, just doing the, the HVAC, the boiler, I think one of the capital item at Wilkins, the quote we had, that, that available was thirty million dollars for that, I believe. Thirty-six million, but the whole building last year now is what, before we do the interest payment?
Forty-nine.
Really think that you could build everything but the boiler and the HVAC for thirteen mil? That, that thirty-six million dollar quote was bonk. Right, so that's why we're asking these questions, people, people that look at this go, there's no way that the capital items at Wilkins are gonna cost thirty-six million dollars to end of life, and the whole building costs forty-nine.
When you start going in and you start opening up walls, you start bringing things up to current.
There's no way you leave that, there's no way you leave that.
Have you, have you ever done renovations? Have you ever gone to this building and started doing renovation? I, I, I ask you, this is a serious.
Yeah, I have.
And has it ever, for one, has it ever been exactly as much as you hoped, or has it escalated and cost as you go, because you find unknowns?
Yeah, so, I've seen a lot of different options there, but I just think, we should all admit that that reason we're asked these questions, because people that matter are the voters, and they're not happy with the answer that we've been providing them. We're, they're not happy with the reports, they're seeing, they have unknown, and the survey will hopefully reveal that, and so I just don't wanna shut down the, in April or May, there's this.
We'll include the survey, and we can have the conversation after, um, but again, if there's no, there's.
You've got, got a question, Jason, I'm sorry, so. I want to be respectful of everybody, the whole seven, eight thing. Like, from my perspective, South Egan's on it, South Egan, there are some board members from, from the South Egan Board who are deeply interested in. The broader South Egan Board doesn't wanna have, they don't wanna have this conversation, they're not open really to this conversation.
You know, Montburn's not at this point.
Mont, Montburn's not, I mean, right, when I listen to, and I don't wanna name board members, because they're not here to, to speak that, but, I mean, they talk about science labs, and Greg, I think your idea is a perfectly valid idea and a great idea in terms of trying, if we wanted that space leasing, and that would help solve the, the union problem. Maybe I'm pessimistic, there is not a chance in hell that the South Egan Board's gonna go, yeah, we'll lease you out of our annex building, I don't.
And we'll lease the land to them.
They're not using our building.
No, it is our lands, it is their.
Not yet, we have one property now, let's grow the district.
So.
We own the land, they own the, they own the building.
You know, so Jason, I, I guess, can you help me understand, I, I knew all this politics stuff.
Yeah.
For me, I don't think the boards are that important, because the Egan Board isn't interested, that to me is not a very strong statement, but you guys say it a lot, so help me understand why it's important, so to me, if, if the voters want it.
We want to accept voters, we can't come up with their own policies every year and put them on the ballot, and I have to.
I'm not.
Yeah, so we are allowed to do that, right, they are allowed to put citizens on, but I just want, we want to just have three hundred and thirty million Americans go through and set policy. But, help me understand, so you think the board needs to convince?
Yeah, if, if. Yeah, yeah, so, from, from, from my perspective, if South Egan isn't interested in that conversation, even, even if we want to.
Right.
We don't have the ability.
Oh, I got you.
No, 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 so I mean, I think the point of, uh, Greg, why it matters is to like whether the board and the administrators are on board with wanting to do that, is because they're the body and the employees charged with developing what's best for those South Egan students. So if you don't have the administrators, the staff, the majority of the board on saying like, this would be great for our students, this is, this is what's going to help all of our students, not just six and seven, but like K eight, right, or K twelve, this is gonna improve the student experience, if what we're hearing, what we've heard consistently, and there have been different people in this seat, there have been different administrators, like, over the course of this work, there have been, what, how many principals? Two superintendents, multiple principals, and none of them have said, this is what's going to best serve our students, and first and foremost, that's what we're here for, that's why we exist, so, I hear you in that, well, if, you know, if, if the board doesn't want it, but the people do, but that's also not been an overwhelming case, when there was the meeting at Wilkins, the one who the minutes are, uh, uh, in question right now, overwhelming number of people showed up that night to talk about not wanting their seventh and eighth graders on the high school campus, so I, I mean, I think that's where, where the frustration comes for, for some folks on, on this board who have been kinda at it for a really long time, is there's not, that's the support, that's the, that's the.
Been a very vocal minority, very, very vocal minority, and, and I say a small minority that has been consistently bringing this up, spearheaded by one or two people on the South Egan Board, and they can say that, that, um, after I spoke with the board, there were conversations that all the comments made in that meeting were taken out of context, there were direct quotes out of that meeting, I mean, they were, we don't know if these spaces are gonna be functionally turned into a classroom, we don't know if we can take the school store and make it a classroom, so, again, I go back to the same question that I had, and I'm fine putting an open-ended question into this survey regarding, you know, what other options, you know, do we wanna consider, what other considerations would be like, is to undertake something along those lines, so people can put those comments in, but I, I, I just don't see that there's this dire, huge outcry for, uh, a seventh and eighth grade over the annex.
Maybe it's an eighth grade then too, I don't like, gonna include that in your discussion, but seven, eight seems like a lot to me. Are you gonna include just eighth graders as a possibility in discussions, and like I said, not unionized?
What does it? What does it buy us, and what would it buy them?
Free space, and then.
They would be giving away something that now limits what they're able to provide for their.
But they're not using.
What they actually use it quite a lot, and they're looking to expand the offerings for what they do, including CTE offerings for their own.
Right, they're looking at that.
Absolutely.
And, and I'll tell you.
So they're gonna, they're gonna give away all flexibility that they have, and totally come to capacity to give us one grade, and what does one grade buy us? When again, I still have a falling apart elementary.
Yeah, we need real thought on that, on the HVAC stuff too, that's not real cool, thirty-six million.
So, I know, I haven't looked into eighth grade, we're not opposed that way, so maybe the seventh and eighth grade collectively, that's the conversation that I've had from twenty twenty on, um, I can tell you, I just had a, a pretty heavy conversation with Dana Curran and, and Galen and Elizabeth Shabro, as they're building the master schedule, they can't find links to fit in all the class offerings right now. You know, right now, we expanded the schedule at South, South Egan to have eight chunks of time, you know, throughout the the year, and when you did that, we wanted to offer more classes for kids to take. And because there is a demand for that, and so, I will tell you, the space is used. The space is, is, you know, after the adjustments of the, the schedule, right? I can tell you, when I took, first took Dan Vayus through that me, building, I can't remember what year it was, when he first got on the board, right? It was on a day, it was on a day, um, where we had ninth graders in, that was the year we had ninth graders in the building.
In the annex.
In the annex, and I happened to take Dan in the afternoon.
Killed us.
And the building was pretty empty in that particular space, cause ninth graders at that point were scheduled in the morning in their core classes, if you, Amy, you remember those days where the first half of the day was like their classes, and the second half of the day was electives, band, gym, art, and so a number of the classrooms were not full. And I'm pretty certain that's when that happened. And there was truth to it, right, it was just how the master schedule worked out, there is the first year that we used the annex for ninth grade only, we don't do that anymore. Uh, they're there primarily, but that was the, so no other classes were scheduled in there, so that's the history of it from mine. Uh, but when I do speak with the, uh, NESDEC people, you know, we'll be sure to, to ask all the right questions, I did find a facility study, um, that um, that my old school district went through, I wasn't really a part of it, I was just a low level principal at that point, and, uh, there's more of a superintendent thing, and, uh.
And that took five months.
It took five months.
We just looked at the timeline.
You know, and so I'll, I'll ask the right questions, and, uh, I'll get back to you, I'll get back to you after I speak with, uh, NESDEC, uh, as, as well, and, uh, and funny, as we're having this conversation, Superintendent Association emailed me back, they'll be ready to talk about this next week with me when they have some people return from vacation.
Thank you.
So, I will line up those conversations, give everyone the information they need, and, uh, and then when we, I'll go back to the survey, I'll make sure that, um, you know, we, we meet with them and we, we look at the previous survey questions, and, uh, and then we'll work with them, and we'll, uh, you know, at least try to get the, the survey information to the chairs to take a look at if it, if it moves that. And I mean, like, if that moves that quickly, then you can figure out how you want it to work with everybody.
And I'd have to be involved as needed for any of those meetings if it's helpful.
All right, appreciate that.
Thanks, man. Uh, all right, so survey we've covered, uh, I think the survey is probably our next step to determining, just to get some better feedback about overall next steps. Obviously, getting something done here in the next month, definitely before our June meeting, so we can determine at that point, um, building and grounds, I think their first charge is, is working with Roger, I think, for an updated CNA, does that, does that make sense from your standpoint? Is it also possible to look at what those holes are for that kick the can option, and how we go about doing that, I don't know how that was put together a few years ago.
We put that together with DEW, um, DEW was our contractor for that, I worked together on that, we were.
Recent, or a few years.
Recent, that was this. The recent one, I think it was dated December, if I'm correct.
Okay, so that was for this year's project, we had thirty-six million.
That's all, that's all in though, that plumbing, electrical, HVAC, that's the entire building, just not HVAC for thirty-three million, just to make that clear.
No, I think they.
Right, I understand that.
And it was also to refurbish, because.
That's okay, I was gonna, there was a thirty million dollar figure from the previous firm, what are the names of it?
We had.
L, LV?
We had better numbers, because we had a more complete, remember. And, and you saw the same thing I did, was that we had looked and we'd said that were the line item by line item, here is building the suit, and here is refurbishing plus adding, so it's simply, it's simply typical refurbishing part.
Yeah, sorry, I'm referring to something that was at least four years old.
I mean, that one, I agree with you, that one is no longer accurate, that we looked at, we actually had.
They're not, they're not just saying that.
More appropriate number.
No, I think.
We did one, the nineteen twenty-three, we worked on one, it came in at thirty-three million dollars, it's maintenance, security, HVAC, window replacement, plumbing, everything that's above the slab plumbing, um, food service, um, then we go into portable supports for eight classrooms, because we were comparing the renovation to the existing project. We have, um, portable breakdown.
We added the portables into the setup of that, yeah.
It was twenty-two million for the systems, and then thirty-three all.
Exactly, with eight classroom portables, portable breakdown.
With freshening.
Yeah. Escalation in there, I mean, the thirty-three million is a bunch of vitamins.
Right, 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 so the, the capital items, end of life items, it's like, if you got, cut windows in there too, it's probably a big chunk, twenty-two mil, that's probably less than that, if you do, if you do, um, you know, as.
But I, but I can't do one thing with it, if I, if I open up a wall, I've gotta put the wall back, if I have, if I go in.
I know, like, the boiler is not a wall.
I, I.
This, this is also phased and laid out, it's not one shot of everything, so it's, it's thirty, it's twenty-two million for those capital items, phased out over years, five, ten, I don't know, re- re-.
That's great, yeah.
It's not just a one shot, I'm done, we're gonna do it all tomorrow.
Right.
So these costs, in theory, could continue to go up with inflation, like, they will escalate in like six percent a year, so.
So, so I know, I know it's nice to think that it could be way, way cheaper, but it's really not, because you still have major systems, you still have to refurbish, you still have to be current code, and you still have unknowns.
A lot of argument today, Terry, is that we just collect all of this in organized fashion, I think that's how we get nos to yeses, I'm not arguing. How we get no's to yeses, I'm not arguing for, I'm not advocate for any previous solution, I'm saying, here's what I think about compiling information. To to, you know.
It's okay, we can speak to how we got the number, but I think that the number is not inflated numbers. And so. What you were saying was, we know it's ridiculous, that's basically an inflated number and no, it's not. It was actually very.
That that number is not as frank, that number is a lot lower than what I was talking about, which had less stuff on, which wasn't. That's crazy, thirty million for just HVAC and.
It wasn't just that. Involved in this would have told you that that was HVAC and boilers, it wasn't.
Give your name later.
I mean, once you go into HVAC, you gotta understand if it's venting, you're removing the ceilings to get to that venting, once you're taking the venting down, you have to move sprinkler systems. It's always more than just HVAC, it's everything involved above that ceiling as well.
So I will say that the number that we come up with last year that said if we were going to build a suit or if we were going to renovate or if we were. Simply going to maintain but have the programming where the programming needs to be, those numbers had true value to them and were informed numbers. Those were not guesses, those were not wild sky in the sky, those were extremely informed numbers. And so I I absolutely agree that some of the early um. Less informed guestimates that were that were. And I would say, I don't know, they were actually informed guestimates, but they were guestimates, right? They were kind of rounding out. The numbers, the numbers that you're saying from four years ago, yes, they were not as accurate as the as these numbers, but any numbers from last year, I think. Were extremely, extremely accurate numbers. They really were, because we've done more pullout plans. We'd actually gone back and paid money to have them do the work and tell us what would it be to renovate or to get up to code versus. Building new. We had those in our hands and we could look at them and say, okay, if we didn't add on and we simply. Added on more portables, what would that cost? We were able to have very informed numbers to work with. So so to say, well, five years ago, our numbers weren't very good, you're right, they weren't as good as the ones that we had more recently, absolutely correct. I agree with you. So on the same page.
And and for the sake of moving us on for um. Our stock to be able to get to pick our kids up, uh. Survey, next phase, we can continue to meet to discuss. Uh overall next steps, we need to reorganize the information that we have to be able to find a better way to present that, I think we're all in agreement on that, uh. And then, which will do two things, it'll serve people that may think the information wasn't presented or wasn't presented well enough. But will also give us a chance to just further find human organize everything. And then last thing I had on my list was the charge for building grounds. I think the list that I had was continuing to discuss, we're at phase two of the roofing project for AMS this year. They need to to go through and come up with some recommendations and do the studies to find out what's the next best phase for that, whether it's. Next year with capital need or or capital reserve, that's not possible, what how how can we break it down and and what's that look like? Over the next five years, what are the recommendations for financing that or doing that project, knowing that there are still leaks in the building? Uh refreshing the CNA, Roger, uh investigating any community properties that were going to do any sort of construction or other places that you can house. Anything, whether it's equipment, students, whatever it might be, and then alternatives to traditional bond funding, um. Investigating maybe not only what's out there, but whatever districts might have done, if anybody else has gotten creative, Roger, and your your community has some experience with. Funding these projects, you may don't see traditional methods, but what else is potentially out there, was legal for us to do or it's not legal for us to do? Any other charges or then you can think of?
He's doing all this one big study, like whatever it's called, the report, like compilation of old and new. Building ground or is that up at the board?
I think we're gonna wait to see what the survey comes back with too, because we're gonna do it, because I think we need to consolidate this, but we also need to consolidate it and put it into pieces.
We can always sign new stuff as it comes up too, right?
We wanna say, you know what, we have, there's been a big cry out for why the special needs program is in house, why we need to keep that here. Let's do a s- a special needs focused bunch of information and consolidate that and have that on the website and then be able to share that information. Say, hey, this is the reason for the special needs program, this is where we're at, this is historical trends, this is the money you save, this is the cost you have, this is what the new building would have. This is what we currently have, pros and cons, uh we can determine that.
Yeah, okay, it sounds good.
So to to the financing piece, um the original project, I did a lot of work at looking at an alternative and I was working with a financial advisor. As PWC had multiple meetings.
What if PWC is private bank?
Yeah, and we ended up, um he ended up. Saying to me, and this was back when, so we could revisit it, but that he wouldn't be able to do better than. So we ended up. But I can revisit it and see, but um we did do quite a uh quite a bit of work with that my first year.
And I think Amy, uh sorry, not Amy, uh I think with that, it's also what are the financing options is we continue that AMS project as well because. ANDS project, roofing project, but whatever needs are coming up too, and that's part of the CNA with Roger effort there. Because we're gonna have to figure out this building not going away, we're still not looking to change this building for a major renovation project that we had two years ago. So we're still gonna have to figure out, we need to renovate rooms, we need to redo electrical, next number of years, we're doing windows and HVAC now. Uh but how do we do that so we can expedite this process, so we stop leaking, we get better temperature controls in these buildings? And then what's the next step after that, what needs to get done? Uh and ways that we can finance that, I know. Uh was building not, it's bonding, but also leasing is an option too for some of this stuff, so. Knowing what that looks like, voting wise and financial wise is going to be helpful.
Leasing still hurts my brain for how exactly that's supposed to work. I I still don't understand how how you lease your.
And after six years, you have a car.
Or you don't.
Anything else?
Uh not anything, I'm gonna get into any detail with this facilities related, we haven't talked about it at all, I'm concerned about. Uh reliving what we lived this year with music and phys ed all in the same space, I don't know, investigating another trailer is wise. Or something for um of music, actually, to say, so effectively or something like.
So we're down a classroom right now, so music is going in a classroom.
Okay, perfect.
Assuming we don't have a lot, because there is one one moved over to Clark.
And and that's gonna be a one year. And we're gonna have to answer the question again the following year. And so. We have, you have one year to where we'll be able to, you know, do it and um actually I'm going over to. Wilkins tomorrow, uh they have a scenario of dilemmas that they wanna present to me. And then I'm bringing it back to senior leadership. I asked them, what kind of problems do you wanna solve? I just know that came up. You know, there's a problem that they wanted to solve and they had the solution of. This window, one year window where they can put that back into the classroom.
We still have a failure in the front of the school, is that still, there's a portal in the front. Yeah, is that still standing here? Is that owned or is that that's leased, right? This is the last year of it.
For three years, I think, right?
It's three years and next year.
Portable, the the fourth grade portable, we were gonna talk about. I know we just re-leveled those last year, the fourth grade portable. Just like live fix, I know that we're doing a lot to stretch that, we just re-leveled them, reskirted them last year.
We just replaced an AC unit in one of them as well.
Okay, I uh and I saw, I saw some IT guys back there, they were doing some stuff on the outside.
Wires, we are repeating a couple of networks.
Yeah, so I just, if that's something we need to start, there's no telling.
Start looking at that as well. I mean, that to me, that's a building grounds item as well, right?
Portables are twenty years old at this point.
And that's about the average life that I expect.
It's a longer uh portable, there's no temporary, right?
Well, that's part of the whole discussion.
They're non-portable, non-temporarily. Those you keep in track, Allenstown School District just opened up their new acreage school. And they dedicated the stage to.
Oh, that's nice, it's really very nice.
It's an amazing thing, it's one of the.
That's nice.
A bigger building aid and it's amazing that it happened in Allenstown. No, but S H L Turner did it.
That's good. Yeah, we reached out to them back then to find out.
That's the other thing, it's like, Amy, the bond bank doesn't allow free payments, right? So the private bank may.
That is, that is an advantage of that, yes.
You can refi.
And then it's refi more often with private bank too.
But it's private bank anyway, it's what, PNC, probably Pittsburgh, that's the one.
I just saw Concrete has its own bond office, they issue their own bonds, so does National, I think.
That was around the, go to the voters either, they just do what they want.
Right, your school district in Concord doesn't, right, but I, yeah, they they issue it through the city. So it's fascinating, they have their own bond rating and they sell Concord municipal bonds, isn't that cool?
Anything else? I appreciate the meeting, uh we get to open up for public comments, do you have anybody there?
Christine Grayson was on most of the meeting. She's still there, she's the only one.
So with that, close public comments and you don't need to be not public today, so without objection, I will adjourn us at.